So did everybody all that recorded?
It was working, I think it dropped.
Oh, the network dropped, the power dropped.
Yeah, we get some connections to the network here.
We'll pull the transparency.
Want to take a brief recess?
Yeah, we'll take a five minute recess.
In hindsight, I should have recorded my screen.
Yeah.
Scott, have you been watching it?
No, I said I should have recorded my screen.
Oh, yeah.
There's a camera that's covering the entire meeting.
Yeah, Doug would have given the, you know, like camera, so.
I've been trying to watch to make sure that it's good sound, you know, and good video.
I would definitely say try to speak closer into your microphones.
Okay.
Okay.
Do we have to touch it before we go?
No.
The bulbs are on, your red light's on there.
Red light.
You only got hold out for about a second. I think the red light, the T R lights on, okay. And then you're going to stay on.
There's no red light though.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Took care of it, make sure it's on.
And the, and the blue light will come on down here too.
Same?
Yeah.
Since we're at recess, can I just ask a general question?
Sure.
When do we, when do they talk about the school taxes? Because these taxes are killing me. And I get that now that I've read everything, I've heard all your scoop, like this is a minor part of my taxes that I'm paying, living and dating. But how in the world do we reduce these taxes?
Right here, they go through the same process, right here, if they have a public hearing, I think they've already had theirs, and they already get theirs.
Uh, it's running around now.
Yeah.
It's running around now.
So.
They didn't, because I had no idea.
Maybe the next couple of days, I'm not sure.
Do they have to post that, or how does that?
Yeah, they're publicly posted, they're posted twice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The paper?
Paper, it's required by law. We put it on the website too, and on our, our website.
Yeah, how does that happen?
I've been on that today, trying to find this.
Let's see here.
So does anybody have information on when that is?
I have my pointer right now.
Thank you.
I looked, I looked for this morning, like today, I haven't found anything. Well, I didn't really count it, I didn't know that.
It looks as though the next meeting now is on the twenty second.
Next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday, right here at six o'clock P M.
That's a teacher schedule.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, really.
The school tax will be seen on your county bill. You get, you get county bill with all the library, the county taxes, and the school board taxes on there.
And it's here, like right here?
Same, right here. Same.
So, sorry, the taxes, are they going to be implemented fiscal year twenty-two or fiscal year twenty-three?
Donna, does it?
They'll be implemented with the taxes will be mailed out this month, or it's September.
Okay.
It'll be the twenty twenty-one tax.
Okay.
Is it, is it, is this a phone?
It says it's streaming live, there's, I mean, it's acting like it's fine.
And we still, still can't get through, is it, still using the phone?
Yeah, I'm using the iPhone.
Your iPhone.
Yeah, I'm using the iPhone, iPhone, and then the camera is connected to their iPhone. But it's, it's saying it's on.
So you think it's recording, just now?
It, it will record, once I shut it off, it'll record all the clips to my call, and then I can post it from there.
But it won't, it won't, it won't do the immediate, the live feed?
Well, it is live.
I've kept it live up until Donna started the second reading.
You're, you're still, you're not still, you need to acknowledge, you need to acknowledge, you need to acknowledge. Last time, fifty years, we lost, we had the old video.
No video.
No video.
So there's no real, I don't require.
This is an app stuff.
This is it. It's, it's convenient, isn't it?
Yeah, it's just, you know, like, yeah.
Right?
I mean, I know, but. A long one, but it was actually.
There was, there is a lot of litigation about the notes, and what the clerk put down, because that's the official record keeping. And people file time, before they get their orders. I heard this, I heard that. Jane Sues. We'll have that probably.
Go ahead and end the, uh, Doug, we good? Thank you, sir. Appreciate your service, sir. Uh, we're going ahead and, uh, end the, uh, recess and bring council back into session. Uh, so Ms. Ledger, just for, uh, clarification and, and make sure everything's correct, could you please do one more second reading of twenty twenty-one number sixteen to twenty twenty-one real estate tax rate, please?
City of Dayton, Kentucky ordinance number twenty twenty-one number sixteen. An ordinance providing for the imposition, levy, collection, and portionment of taxes for the city of Dayton, Campbell County, Kentucky, for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty-one through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. This ordinance sets the real property asset loan tax rate for the city for the present fiscal year at point four four six one, per one hundred dollars of value for the general fund and point oh five oh for one hundred dollars of value for parks. The tax rate for automobile property is set at point five oh oh nine for one hundred dollars of value and at point seven five oh for one hundred dollars of value for all other property. This ordinance requires that all real property and other tangible property excluding motor vehicle, motorcycles, or motorboats, taxes be paid by November thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Taxes not paid by this date shall become delinquent. Taxes paid during the first three days after they become delinquent will be assessed a one percent penalty. Any taxes not paid within three days after they become delinquent shall be subject to a penalty of ten percent and shall accrue interest at the rate of twelve percent per annum until paid. The delinquent taxpayer also pay all costs, attorney fees, and other expenses incidental to any action taken by the city for the collection of the delinquent tax bills. This ordinance also sets the bank, bank deposits at twenty-five, twenty-five thousandths of one percent, point oh two five percent of those deposits. The payer of these taxes may pay the sum due less two percent if paid by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, or the full amount by January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. Second reading.
I move to accept ordinance number twenty twenty-one number sixteen.
Member Volker has made a motion to accept twenty twenty-one number sixteen, do I have a second?
I'll say it.
Member Neary has made a second, that opens up the comments for council, do you have any comments regarding twenty twenty-one number sixteen? Close comments.
Actually, I do, sir.
Yes, sir.
We all voted to raise pay for firefighters and police.
Yes, sir.
Now we got to vote to pay for it. I did a quick online today, close look, look.
Did you?
Of our surrounding Campbell County tax rates, based on average home value. And Dayton, and the, the average home value is Zillow, so I'll take that to what it's worth. But I found them pretty accurate with their algorithms. Dayton's average home value is just shy of a hundred fifty thousand dollars, one forty-nine-nine. That means at four thirty-four, which was last year's rate, the average homeowner is paying six hundred fifty dollars and fifty-seven cents. Less than two dollars a day for free ambulance, uh, fire protection, police protection, everything that the city provides, parking spaces, and streets. You compare that to Bellevue, which is probably our closest comparison population-wise, location-wise. Their average home value is a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars, which is roughly twenty percent more. Their tax rate is lower than ours, three point five two, but they actually net pay more in property tax, six hundred seventy-five versus our six fifty. Southgate has a much higher tax rate and a much higher home value, or actually, I've got a median home value, one seventy-five home value, five point nine six property tax rate. So the average homeowner there pays a thousand dollars. Fort Thomas, which everybody wants to be Fort Thomas, uh, their tax rate is lower than ours, three point nine seven, but their average home value is two ninety, two hundred ninety-three thousand. So the average homeowner up there pays eleven sixty-three, almost double what we do here in Dayton. I want my home values to go up, that's my equity, that affects my insurance, my credit score. Someday, I or my heirs are going to sell my house, and I want it to be worth more money. I applaud what this administration and code enforcement is doing in the city to increase property value. Because that's the key, we're subject to the, I'll be kind, uh, we're subject to the assessment of the P D A. Not Zillow. If we could sell the house, uh, then that goes on the books at that resale price. We've got to get more houses turned over, abandoned buildings fixed up and sold. That's what we need to do to be able to reduce this tax rate. For twelve dollars more a year, we almost lost our ambulance. We came really close to losing at least one, if not two shifts off of our ambulance, because nobody's applying to be a fireman anymore, or an E M T. So when there's a vacancy in one department, it snowballs through all the departments. We've got to do this to keep up. And it's not just the fire department, I don't blame them, as Mr. Fosson said, gas prices are going up, all of our equipment is going up. We finally have a full crew in public work so that we can take care of the complaints without hours. Much as I hate to increase my own taxes, and we have to pay these taxes too, all of us sitting here. We have to do this, we absolutely have to do this. So hoping that you're right, and then next year, we can reduce the percentage, it's probably still going to be the same amount, six hundred fifty dollars for an average home, but at least a percentage of less. To your point, I've spoken to a lot of real estate agents, because our tax rate's been an issue for me for a long time. Every real estate agent I have spoken to says that no one ever asks about the tax rate. They ask about the house and the value of the house and the community. That's where I think we need to keep improving there. And hopefully, the rate will go down and it won't be an issue. I, I, I feel like, uh, you know, my expenses are going up more than four percent this year, my personal expenses, uh, but we've got to do this. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Member Neary. For the floor still open, for the council members who'd like to discuss. I closed the floor here at three, two, and one, we have a motion by Member Volker, second by Member Neary. Ms. Ledger, can we have a whole call vote?
Member Demon? Member Kelly? Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volker?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Did you hear this vote? Next on the agenda is a presentation by Ms. Cindy Minter, uh, she's Campbell County planning and zoning.
Just a little background, Cindy, it was kind enough to come here, um, tonight, uh, we have a number of things that are going on, she helped us do during, during next week, she's going to talk about, but I asked her, like, I've done with, uh, Lonnie Warner, and we might, um, get her next meeting to kind of give us an overview of the old kind of idea of things that are coming up in the city, you know, on, on the same day, so Cindy, I'll, I'll be your banner wife.
Okay, all right, thank you very much, um, if you have any trouble hearing me, please let me know. And that, but I am going to kind of direct you to the slides to kind of give you a little bit of visuals here. Um, again, I'm Cindy Minter, I'm the director of planning and zoning for Campbell County. Um, myself and, and the team that I work with, Sarah, Asher, Steph, for filming items, we are happy to do that. Um, we have a number of administrative items that we're going to be looking at in addition to, to the general cases that come through with development, um, that comes through. And I wanted to bring you up to speed with those administrative items. We tend to try to weave those in, in between, um, active cases for development, so you may see one, one month and then not see one for two months, because we have other development coming in, wanted to bring that to you. We, we'll emphasize that these administrative items are not items where we may suggest them, we look to either the planning commission or this council to actually sponsor the cases. Um, so your, your, your staff from Campbell County will not sponsor these cases, we will prepare the information for them and do a staff report for you. Um, but we really do look, these are just things that we suggest to you in concert with your city administrative, um, that, that we try to address, and so I want to kind of bring these to your attention. Okay, go ahead. So we, we just recently kind of worked through relaxing the outdoor dining tax and getting the mobile food vending tax, those are two of them that you've already accomplished, good job. Um, we have another one that is ongoing right now, which is expanding your central business district to Main Street. Um, and if you can hit the next slide, I can show you this a little bit. So what we've got is we've got an area, um, basically, I call it the east central business district, although there's a couple little pockets up by the park, and then another little bit down by Berry Street, that are logical to be part of your central business district. Um, so we're looking to expand your central business district to include those properties as well. A single-family home is permitted in your, in your central business district. You know, but we also, it's, it's an area that's leaning more towards some commercial development, especially under corner lots and some of the restored infrastructure.
So Cindy, those single-family homes.
Mm-hmm.
Do not become non-conforming uses.
That, that was correct, and we will have this on a case next week, so we encourage anybody that has questions or wants to dig into the weeds on it, to actually, if you go to the next slide. Um, so, kind of looking at these pockets, these are areas where you identified in your comprehensive plan as being part of your downtown urban core. With the exception of, actually, you've got the blue area down to the south, um, which was not part of it, but is actually commercial, so there's a difference between what your actual zoning is and what your comprehensive plan said. And then the small corner lot at the intersection of Berry there is a triangular shaped building, which was historically a, just a little, like, you know, storefront, and there's a desire to kind of put it back into a commercial use. So those are kind of the pockets that we'll be looking at. Do you go on to the next slide? So on September twenty-second at seven P M, um, down at the, um, Second Avenue location, we will be having the full-blown planning and zoning case on this. We actually encourage any of the council members, any of the general public, anybody that has an interest in this, whether you be a property owner in that area or not, um, that's, that's the point in time to really discuss that argument in detail. Once it comes through the planning commission, then it will come back to this council. So while we'd like to have your comments at the planning commission, because that influences their decision, um, it will then ultimately come back for, to council for your decision. So we're not asking you to make any decisions on any of this tonight, we're just really trying to give you an idea of what's out there. Um, so, I'm sorry, Mr. Volker, did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the next one is actually adjusting your industrial zone. Um, so your industrial zone has two issues, if you want to hit the next slide. Um, but I'm kind of walking through a little bit of history on your industrial zone first. So in nineteen sixty-two, this was, you know, that general area before you had the floodwalls. Okay, so go ahead, and there's like four slides you can kind of look through. Nineteen eighty-nine, we start, the flood wall was in place, and we started to see the emergence of our industrial park, uh, which has been a good revenue source, I mean, good jobs since jumping that area, go ahead. Uh, by nineteen ninety-nine, we kind of started to see it in its full maturity, and then not a whole lot changed, go ahead. Um, in terms of the number of, of blocks that were, were changed, when we look at it in twenty twenty. So we've kind of gotten about as big as it's going to get, although there's some infill properties in there. And so if you kind of look at that, there's been a number of residential properties that were slated to kind of flip as part of this into the industrial park. Go ahead. Um, but we're starting to see some problems with it, and so we went, I went and dug down and did a little bit of homework on it, and while you've got a number of parcels that are city-owned, we also have some residential uses that are still within your industrial zones and heavy pockets of that. So we really, go ahead, you go to the next slide. I went each of these, through each of these blocks, and really kind of looked at it and said, hey, what was occurring? So kind of in the, in the A area, there's still one residential use in there, taking all the P D A's value, you know, it's poor condition. In the B area, I kind of looked what's on the north side and what's on the south side, because they're really, they're separated by an alley. Um, the north side, you know, we, we don't see a whole lot of residential uses, but on the south side, we see some pretty strong residential uses. Similarly, on, on lot C, or block C, we see that, and then kind of going back into D, we see where, you know, we've got just a very few, um, residential properties. So A, B, and the northern parts of, or A, D, and the northern parts of B and C all seem to be going as designed within that industrial zone. But the lower halves of B and C are, um, are concerned, and go ahead, flip to the next slide. So when we look at that area, we see really, um, that those properties, whether zone I one, should really kind of be zone R one J J with the rest of the community. And here's the challenge that we get from those, with those properties, and probably why we're seeing condition levels in there. There, from a maintenance, from a property insurance, from an appraisal with financing, they all come up as, as being flagged as industrial property with a residential use. So a common question that we get with appraisals is if this property were, if this home, you know, were destroyed, if a fire happened, or something that destroyed this home more than fifty percent of its value, could it be built back as a single-family home? The answer is no. Okay? So that property owner has been reluctant to put in, you know, to get some additional financing, or the handicap with that, and or to get, to do some of the property maintenance on it, um, because it's like, okay, it's perpetually going to flip to industrial, as, as industrial, should I be doing anything really to this structure, because the values in the land are not in the house?
But they are non-conforming.
But they are non-conforming right now. What we're proposing is that you consider looking at basically those two blocks, um, to see if we should actually be transitioning back to the R one J J and bringing them back into conforming use, because it's good quality housing stock. Okay, go ahead, the next one. Similarly, in our, in our industrial zone, your text is very antiquated, it was, you know, probably developed in the late sixties, early seventies. Um, what you see on the left is kind of some of the language for things of manufacturing types for your permitted uses. We struggle with new uses coming in, asking, hey, can I be in this site? So for example, while you have candy and confectionery products, we had a business that is actively down there right now, that is packaging waffle mix. Kind of, well, is that candy and confectionery, sort of, you know? We struggle with getting that in there, where that language is. Similarly, you don't have anything in there that isn't really about computers. So, you know, if you, if I had somebody that comes that's coming in doing computer repair, um, doing a, you know, kind of anything kind of very heavily electronic-based, we weren't thinking about that in nineteen sixty-nine, nineteen seventy-two. So we really need to modernize that industrial zone text, um, and so we proposed making some of those changes as well. So it's a good solid scrub of your industrial zone permitted uses. You go one more? The other item we have is your, your actual acreage size, so you have basically large businesses and small businesses in your, in your area of conformity. But that also means, you know, very different setbacks, so your traditional, you have, they have a quarter acre lot, whereas your small business, you can be six thousand square feet. That's really arbitrary for us to try to enforce by saying, are you a small business? Or are you a business? And really, your, all of your businesses down there aren't considered small businesses. Um, so we need to clear, putting up the, the area dimensions basically on what the desirable lot size is. So from this perspective, we'd like to move forward with modernizing your industrial zone, I think that will help your economic development team and attracting good quality jobs and businesses to that site. Okay. Okay, so, um, the next one I want to talk about is kind of modifying your, and these are not in any particular order. Um, if you feel strongly that one item needs to be bumped up in priority, I, I do kind of know the order and magnitude of bringing some of these cases forward, so someone might be really simple, but I can tap onto that on a small meeting. Some of these are all consuming, like the industrial home, will take an entirely by itself. So we want to modify the average conditions to assist kind of with your infill development, and if you go to one more slide. So kind of, this is just a, a quick picture, just to kind of give you, if I were a corner lot, okay, like the one you see on the left, my minimum front yard setback is ten feet, but I have a double frontage lot, so I have to do ten feet on both sides of that lot. That then makes that lot basically undevelopable. And so there's lots of little things that are like that. An easy way to address this, though, is we have a, we have chapter nine, which is general conditions, and we'd actually look at changing some of the items in, in those general conditions, so that we have the opportunity to average it with the neighborhood. So if I average the setback with everything that's along the street, um, then I suddenly start to get a house that looks like everything else on the street, but is not over-penalized because of where it is or how it's shaped. And I think at that point, you'll start to see, um, history tells us with other communities, that you'll, you'll get some strong infill development at that point. Um, so we want to, we want to look at the ability to modify those average conditions to basically assist with that infill development.
Who would make that determination? Would it be on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, it would be on a case-by-case basis, but if we have it in that text, then administratively, we can approve it as it's coming through. If somebody were looking at doing a whole lot, that's a planning and zoning case. For a lot of these items, then they could be, it could be handled by staff on your behalf.
Thank you.
Excellent.
And, and that is important, because sometimes a, a property owner, if we, they're, they're intimidated by asking for a variance. Some are, you know, it's, it's a, it's a big enough development, I don't have a problem with it, um, it'll cost you probably around anywhere from five to eight hundred dollars to go forward with the variance. You know, in average, just single-family home lot that's, that's doing that, they, they may just pass on that lot and move to the next one. Um, that, that, that's can be a determining factor. Um, to, to pay that and then to have the extra, you know, two months' worth of time of bringing it forward to kind of the planning commission, before they can actually, you know, go forward and sit up like on a local lot. Most homeowners aren't going to take that risk.
So your proposal is to streamline that, and then if someone will come with a plan for infill.
Right.
Specifically, they would go to P and Z for approval or recognition?
So they would go, they would go to your staff first, we would be able to look at that, the, the planning and zoning documents, so that, you know, our team that's looking at that, that site plan, and say, okay, can we make it match with everything that's on that lot? And if we can't, then it's, they're going to have to go to the planning commission, or actually to the board of justice.
Board of justice, yeah, thank you.
Got you. Okay, so then we also want to kind of, similarly to how when you're looking at the C B D on the east side, we want to look at the west side as well, so basically from Sixth Avenue and Irwin Terrace all the way down to Old Fallon. So if you go to the next slide. Okay, so this is kind of the, the west side of your C B D, so it's the area that spans from your existing C B D and down to your neighborhood commercial district. Um, and we actually want to include your neighborhood commercial district, because we just want to do a good, solid look at that. You do have some, uh, some heavier residential uses, more so than you had, um, on your east side, so we want to be protective of those residential uses, although a good many of them are multifamily structures, so there's, there are two-family, three-family dwellings. Those are already non-conforming, and they likely continue to be non-conforming. But we want to look at this area to really strengthen your commercial district, whether it be called your neighborhood commercial district, or whether it be called your central business district, um, particularly on your corner lots, because when you look at the structures on your corner lots, they look and feel like commercial buildings. And it's just kind of a natural progression of the commercial district coming into, um, Dayton, so we want to spend some time looking at that, this one. I haven't delved in enough to know what the answer is to. I haven't delved in enough to know what the answer is to this one yet, other than I know it needs to be delved into in detail.
Good point.
Yep. Okay, so your sign ordinance, go ahead and the next one. Your sign ordinance is just like everybody else's sign ordinance throughout the entire nation, not just the state of Kentucky, not just Canton County. There were a number of court cases in recent years that really tied the hands of zoning ordinances around the country with respect to sign ordinances. Your sign ordinance does need to, just like your industrial park zone, needs to be modernized, okay? We need to focus on time, place, and manner, and be content neutral, okay? When we look at our zoning ordinance, you know, we can't write it, the kind of the general rule of law is if you have to read the words on it, then you're not content neutral, and it doesn't, and basically you're affecting free speech, okay? We have to look at, we can say, what does it look like? What's the time of days? Or, or the lighting or anything that's on it? We can look at its manner, but we can't be reading it to interpret what the sign is. Your sign ordinance needs to be modernized with that. I have a draft text now that I'm looking through with another community. That's going to be finished fairly soon. So it's a good sample now that we've got, that somebody else has done the work for you, to start to bring that forward, to modernize your sign text. So I want to get that in the queue. Okay, flood zone ordinance, that's a, that's a hard one, but an easy one, because that's a model ordinance that comes down to us from the state. Your flood zone ordinance does need to be updated as well. That's kind of entrenched into your zoning, and that, but we, we do need to update your ordinance as well. But that'll be based on a statewide model. I'm going to apologize now, it's a 27-page ordinance, the attorneys will love me. But most of it comes from the code of federal regulations, so I'll, I'll point out those pieces of parts to you when you get it. Okay, one more. So removing the Phase 3 Central Business District. So go ahead and the next slide and I'll show you this one. So there is a small pocket just behind your central business district that is an R-1-J-J zone, but it also has an additional distinction of it of being Phase CBD. And in your, in your documents, this actually refers to that, whenever this was created, and I don't know when it was, that this block, you wanted it basically to become parking to support the central business district. So this is kind of like your industrial zone with residential housing and that industrial zone being camper with it. So if somebody were to, if a home were demolished in there, again, that would come back and say, well, that, that's how it should be phased for supporting the central business district, which was basically designed to be parking for the central business district. I feel very strongly that this needs to be removed, and it just needs to be traditional R-1-J-J. And, and I will give you that recommendation now. All right. All right. We do need to come back, just as we did the outdoor dining, need to come back and look at short-term rentals. This is a combination of zoning text and city policies that need to go forward, but you do need to address short-term rentals. So that, that's one one we're going to be working on as well. And then your last one is your subdivision regulations. Your subdivision regulations are really almost your original ones from when they were established. Again, that's 70s timeframe, construction means and methods have changed a lot. These are the definitions that define, you know, how a street will be constructed. You don't get new streets that often, but it is really important to go ahead and update those regulations. And again, we have some model descriptions for that that have been, we actually have been working with Canton County as well in trying to get some uniform rating, you know, this is what defines, you know, what your concrete mix is going to be. And we want to try to keep the uniformity in that across multiple jurisdictions so that we get some, so that we're not a specialty mix. That we get some, you know, that way when it comes time for construction, it's not like, oh, well, Southgate wants this, and Delphi wants this, and Alexandria wants that. Okay, they're, they're a specialty mix, so therefore their mix is going to cost more. So we want to get some uniformity in, in all of that across the board. And so we're, we're going to be updating your subdivision regulations as well. That's a lot. That's what we're going to be doing for the next year, you know, meeting with your cases that come forward. So we've got a heavy plate in front of us, and I wanted to give you an update of where that is.
Well, thank you very much, Ms. Spencer. It is a lot, and it's a lot of catch-up work, and it's a lot of, uh, given us, uh, in the 21st century, and we're very lucky to have your expertise on our side.
Thank you, we're happy to work with you.
How do you say it? Does anybody have any questions, Colson?
I just want to say that they are a pleasure to work with, and the other team did a great job, and we really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
I have a question, this is Valerie.
Yes, name again.
Um, the area you were talking about, it's over by the community garden, it was, you're recommending that should be moved back to an R-1-J-J to, or residential?
I think it's a I-1 right now?
Oh, okay, I think.
We'll see that, it'll be on your paper.
Yeah, it's kind of a secondary industrial area.
Yeah.
Okay, and you're recommending that it should be changed back to an R-1-J-J because it's so densely residential?
Yeah, so the, if I kind of look at the map, the lower half of blocks B and C, for lack of a better description of them, there's some good quality housing stock in there.
I agree.
And this would allow those, this would bring them back from industrial into the R-1-J-J. And we focused in on the rest of the area for the industrial infill development.
I just had a question, historically, obviously they were built as, it was a residential neighborhood, it started off that way. How in the world did that happen? That they changed the status of those homes, so they were discouraged from keeping up? Their homes were making any improvements for so many years because they knew they could no longer sell their houses as a residence? Like it almost robbed them of any equity? And it encouraged so much blight down there, so much demolition over the years, and what we have is, you know, how did that happen?
I really can't speak as to how or why it happened, because I don't have those historical records. I tried to focus on that, I kind of had the same, I mean, I, I have to answer the questions from people that are trying to refinance a house in that area, you know, on a daily basis. And that's a hard discussion to have, and it's like, you know, this really doesn't make sense.
No, at all.
That's why I went through and did basically a house-by-house analysis with the PBA and said, okay, what's, what's the condition of this house? Is it a good, you know, are these houses that are, you know, really shouldn't be having? There was one, there's one in that whole general area, in the ABC area, that is an unlivable house, and they have it flagged in that. But there's some good quality housing stock in there. That getting it back to the R-1-J-J, I think, you know, is, I think the right thing to do. You had established an industrial park, you mean the city of Dayton, you know, as a, to really kind of bring some, some economic development into your community. And if I go back historically through the maps from 1962 forward, you can see the growth and development of that industrial park. But you also, from 1999 to now, kind of stopped growing on the outside of that park. You had some more infill development to the outside of it, and you pretty much hit the size and the location of where it's going to be. So really, there's time to reassess and say, are we done? And should we be back where we are?
I've had one question. Member Neary, you probably remember, I, I had thought, several years back, probably you and Mayor Baker, I thought we had done some, there had been some ordinance changes for those corner buildings in the central business district. Are these new changes something different than that? Or will then they like supplement those changes that were made previously?
That was specifically for the CCAP qualification. The CCAP is limited to the central business district, but we included that addition. You're talking about an amendment, was to include any buildings on Sixth Avenue that are within 100 feet of an intersection. So that was strictly for the CCAP, not for zoning ordinance.
Okay.
I, I am going to piggyback on it. You did make some tax changes on the zoning a few years back, where we were really trying to save some of the historical properties at the corners and allow them to be commercial, but we also put some pretty healthy restrictions on them. This would kind of, I think, make them more traditional commercial businesses without those restrictions. So one of the, one of the changes that you made was for, for a residential structure, for a combo residential structure, your text used to say that the first floor could be commercial and you have residential living space up above. But when we really looked at the structures, a lot of them had a kitchen on the first floor, and that was a kitchen that was traditionally part of the business, you know, the building that was there. And then the lip, and the sleeping floors were on the above floor. So this enabled somebody to still have the kitchen on the first floor. So in fact, we said, okay, really the front room is what needs to be the commercial piece. And we, we allow living space on that, the rear of the house, of the house, and the upper floors as well. You're welcome.
If I could, getting to your point about the industrial zone change, which is long overdue. It's, times have changed since 1970. I think in the 70s, that was actually part of the flood wall bond issue to turn that into an industrial zone. But then they opened up 471 and everybody looked out to other areas. What are your feelings, Ms. Spencer, upon, we've got some residential, would be on the north side of Third Street. That's Ford, this is Third. There is some residential here, and they're all these smaller lots. What would be your argument against including that in the R-1-J-J?
So it gets a little bit tricky when you get into that area. And again, that's what we're going to be looking at when this case, when that case comes forward. And the planning commission could, could recommend an expansion of it, or, or recommend, you know, strictly that area. So, you know, it is, again, it's, it hasn't come forward as a case, it is a future case to come forward. And they may look at adjusting those items. I think they really have to go and look, you know, property by property, and what the property is being used as and its condition. It's a little bit, it, it was very distinct on the properties along Fourth Street. It was less distinct on a decision on the properties along Third Street. We also have to, as part of the process, when that case comes forward, notify every property owner in that area. And when we notify everyone as property owners, there could very well be some property owners that say, you know what? I want my property staying industrial, because I do intend for it to be industrial in the future. Likewise, if it's, you know, it's always going to be residential. So it really, we have to work through that logic, and we haven't had a chance to do that yet.
Thank you. Thanks for pushing that forward, it's long ago.
I believe it is as well. And I, and I credit your city manager for jumping on that right away when it's pointed out.
Any other questions for Ms. Spencer, or anyone else on the panel? All right. Thank you very much for your time tonight, and I'm working over, we appreciate that. Looking forward to seeing you soon.
If we do have a resolution on this issue, it's going to be too much.
Exactly, yeah. Hey, yes, I'll just pause your mic, is all.
Oh, sorry, if we do have a resolution on this issue, asking the city council to sponsor these types of zoning issues.
So the next order of business on our agenda this evening is Order Resolution 2021 Number 28 Romeo, requesting the Dayton Planning and Zoning Commission to review the proposed map and tax changes. So what we are doing is, we are, we're asking for the changes to be pushed towards our PNC Board, and for them to give their recommendations back to this council in a couple of months. So would anybody like to make a motion to accept the Order 2021 Number 28 Romeo?
So moved.
Ladies first.
Second.
Ms. Neiman had the first, and the second was Member Basler. Do you have any comments regarding 2021 Number 28 Romeo? Roll call, please.
Member Kelly?
I'm.
Member Basler?
I'm.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
The ayes have unanimously, thank you very much, Ms. Spencer.
Thank you very much.
If you want to quit me. Uh, we do have two pieces of, uh, order resolutions coming up to us for this evening. One's a first reading about waste collection fee, and the other is a member of the Code Enforcement Board. Would anybody from the audience like to comment or speak with the council regarding this to, to legislation? Anybody? All right. So we'll go ahead and move forward with First Reading of 2021 Number 17. This is an ordinance submitting their waste collection fee with, with Ms. Ledger.
City of Dayton Kentucky, ordinance number 2021 Number 17. In ordinance submitting Session 50.09 of the Dayton City of Ordinances to increase the residential waste collection fee by 3% to $132.01 is required by the Solid Waste Contract with Republic Services of Ohio Halling, LLC. That's the first reading.
A little background on that, just so you're aware, we had a contract with Republic Services, five-year contract that expired in July, which is automatically a two-year extensions. So we're in the current two-year extension, but there's a 3% increase on that amount. So we have to approve this, and then hopefully pay by the, and then pay by the consumer.
This, this is a sweet deal that we got with, with Republic. They, uh, they won't be able to offer it in the future.
Yeah, we did, we've done it. We've done, this was done, this was done in conjunction with the City of Delphi. We did this out, we got a really good deal. That ability is 3% after a five-year contract, it's a pretty good deal. So we're pretty happy with it, and we'll get the service, we recommend it.
Well, this is the first reading. We'll have to have a second reading. I guess it's certainly her to then, or whoever. Does that give, because that's included with the tax bill, does that give the city club enough time? As it does.
She's going to compare, unless we give the correction later going over through this, she's having to start comparing those bills. So I mean, it's a chance, but if you don't agree, let us know, because we have to do that.
The official vote of Debbie and Nancy.
Yes.
And again, this is a first reading. Uh, so next on the agenda is Order Resolution Number 2021 Number 29 Romeo. Uh, so fortunately, accepting the resignation of Randy Byles from the Code Enforcement Board, and fortunately, appointing Maggie, Maggie Volker into the Code Enforcement Board. So I have a motion to accept 2021 Number 29 Romeo. Member Volter's move, second?
Second.
Second, and then Member Neiman. Any comments? I'll make one. Uh, Rand, Rand's amazing, we are very lucky to have her in our community. Unfortunately, she has obligations on, on that evening, and we'll deal with the new girl. So regardless of whether we accept the resignation, it'll be open with, uh, welcome arms, uh, Miss Volker. Roll call, vote please.
Member Basler?
Aye.
Member Volter?
Aye.
Member Neary?
Aye.
Member Neiman?
Aye.
Member Kelly?
Aye.
That is all we have on the agenda this evening, I would like to make a motion adjourned.
So moved.
Any second?
I'll second.
Second, and then Member Kelly, all in favor?
Aye.
They agree much, we got a hell of a day.